Regular session of the Red Oak City Council to order this Monday, October 20th, 2025, at 5:30 PM at the Red Oak Fire Station located at 1904 North Broadway. Just a reminder that this meeting is open to the public and it is being recorded and will be available on our YouTube channel. Uh, let's see invocation by Pastor Kevin Berry with River of Life Church. All rise.
Reverend Father, first of all, we thank you for a good day and we invite you here. We invite your wisdom. We invite your peace that that the the things of the city can be taken care of well, that that the that the turmoil and frustrations in our community can be dealt with. And that we can that we can turn to you as the one thing that does not change, that does not uh, that does not disappoint, that we can that we can find our that we can find our stability and our meaning in you. Please, Lord, we want our community to thrive. We want our community to do well. Please help us to to do things that bring honor and glory to your name and advance our community. Please help us to grow and to be a shining light here in the state of Iowa. Lord, we love you and we thank you. Please help us to to show that in this meeting. Lord, we love you and we thank you. Amen.
And then Councilman Bills, will you lead us with the pledge?
Pledge of allegiance is stood by the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Roll call, Suzy.
Bradley.
Here.
Bills.
Here.
Brightoff.
Here.
Lester.
Here.
Debrin.
Here.
Number five, approval of the agenda.
Approved.
Brightoff.
I'll second.
Bradley. Any discussion? Roll call. Bills.
Yes.
Brightoff.
Yes.
Lester.
Yes.
Debrin.
Yes.
Yes.
Number six is proclamations and special notices. And I it is my privilege and honor to recognize someone in our our audience tonight. I think I'm going to come stand up here if that's okay. Does it still get us? And then Shirley, you can join me at the podium.
If I can get up. Thank you so much.
So I'm going to read this proclamation on China. I get all choked up. This is challenging for me. So this is a proclamation honoring and thanking you Shirley Billings. Whereas the city of Red Oak, Iowa wishes to recognize and honor individuals whose longstanding commitment and service have enriched our community. And whereas Shirley Billings has been a devoted, active member of the Red Oak community for many years, dedicating her time, talent, and leadership to the betterment of the city and its citizens. And whereas together with her late husband, Lieutenant Billings, Shirley co-owned and operated a well-respected local law firm, contributing to the professional civic and economic life of Red Oak. And whereas in addition to her business endeavors, Shirley has served the community in numerous capacities as a licensed realtor, a member of the Red Oak Women's Club, the Downtown Urban Renewal Board, and the Historic Preservation Commission, and I'm sure many more. Whereas Shirley has also been a dedicated property owner and manager, investing in the vitality and improvement of Red Oak's residential neighborhoods. And whereas she has generously given her time and support to many local organizations, including the Optimist Club, the Girl Scouts, and the Court of Honor. Demonstrating her strong sense of civic responsibility and community pride. Whereas Shirley's countless contributions, compassionate spirit, and dedication have left a lasting impact on the city of Red Oak. And whereas Shirley now prepares to relocate to Omaha, we're going to miss you. The mayor and city council of Red Oak wish to express their sincere appreciation for your many years of service, leadership, and friendship to this community. Now therefore, be it resolved that I, Shawna Silvius, Mayor of the City of Red Oak, Iowa, on behalf of the Red Oak City Council, do hereby extend heartfelt gratitude and appreciation to you Shirley Billings for your dedicated, for your decades of dedication, leadership, and positive influence in Red Oak. And we offer our warmest wishes for happiness and fulfillment as you begin the next chapter of your life. In witness whereof, I have here unto me set my hand and caused the seal of the city of Red Oak to be affixed this 20th day of October, 2025. So there you can now. Council members, would you have anything to say?
I'd like to say that I've known Shirley most of my life because her parents had the farm where Acorn Acres is now. And I graduated with her sister Charmaine. And she and Levon had been in my life for years and know have they supported Red Oak and done a lot for Red Oak. So we'll miss you Shirley.
Yeah, yeah. Well, I won't leave permanently, but I'll be back. But it's just the thing I'd have to do right now and be close to family to help have them help me. And I was so lucky to find a townhouse that fit the bill. And that's what I'm going to do. And I want to tell you people that that was my dad that sold the 10 acres for the little red housing. And I heard they talked about it at that first meeting they had. Well, then I called Mr. Warner and said, why wasn't I invited to that? I heard all you did was talk about my dad. And so then when they had this one for the general public, I went to it and I was very impressed because I had never been there. No reason to be. They wanted to know what the lay of the land was. And I said, it was 10 acres. And where you see the rocks there, that is north where our house was. And that's where there's a kind of a creek that goes through there. But I think after I was out there, I think we should be real proud of that. You know, so and I was born and raised there. Because Dr. Alden came and sat on the steps and waited till I decided to come. And then when my sister was born four years later, he said, I have to tell you, Mrs. Monson, you have to go to the hospital for this one. So that's my history. I'm in here.
Was it in the country at that time? Was it was it closer?
Yes.
It was in the country at that time.
Yeah, because that's before Skyline and Sunset or any of that was built. It was just barn. 10 acres of land. And then I think it was higher than owned the next hunk of land north of that. And
Interesting.
It's a whole different look, especially with New 34.
Yes, it is, isn't it?
Yeah, so.
So anybody else have anything you'd like to say to Shirley?
I will. I've known Shirley for a long time. I can't really put in a year to it. She's been a great supporter of the theater. But my biggest thing is think of how short of a distance it's going to be to go to all those Creighton games.
Well, I have a plan. I call Molly and say, when are you picking me up to go to the game?
There you go.
When they pick me up, where do you want to go to eat? You know, Grandma pays. Then we go to the game. And they can help me in and out so I don't fall. And then they can take me home and it's right by their place within blocks, nine blocks. And I'll be home and I won't be driving back and forth after a game and it's snowy and icy and I decided I couldn't go, you know? So that's awesome. I'll I'll enjoy the games. In fact, my son, I have to tell you this, my grand oldest grandson was married to Okaboji last a week ago Saturday. And they said, there's going to be something special at 9:30. You've got to stay here. I was ready to go back to the hotel. And anyway, they asked all the Creighton people to go out and dance, which I've got two grandchildren that graduated from there and all my host Scott's friends. And then what happened? Here came Billy Blue Jay out in his uniform. And I didn't know who he was. And finally, I figured it out. It was the best man. And he had on the Blue Jay outfit. And then he, after they all danced, he'd come over and sit down and talk to me for a long time. So it meant a lot to me since I lost my son.
Yes, I agree.
So we got the wedding over.
Good.
It was great. Thanks, everybody.
Thank you.
We also had a plaque for you, but the engraving company had a little issue. So there was a delay. So I said, well, we'll still know where Shirley is sold maybe that.
That's fine. And I'll put it up at my new home.
Good, good, good.
Okay, my new office. I took the front bedroom and made that into a office.
I wouldn't expect anything else.
I liked that room too.
Yes. Well, thank you for coming. If you don't want to stay the whole time, Shirley, we understand.
I want to listen to your people.
Great.
One last hurrah.
All right. All right. Number seven is public comments. Do we have any public comments? Nothing online either? Okay. Number eight is department reports. Cemetery and nuisance. I think we'll probably do it together. And Brad provided a wonderful report in the packet. Thank you, Brad.
I'm going to start off by introducing my two biggest resources and assets. My employees, Ron Tilton, Jason Munger. Um, everything that we accomplished there and on the nuisance side also we couldn't do without. So I asked them to come and join us tonight so you can see faces and the names to faces. So I appreciate them and they're in the backbone of things out there. So.
Great. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you. Guys, hold on. The just in your report, I'll try to go over it real briefly and then answer questions. I combined nuisance and cemetery for right now. Uh, I'll kind of blaze through the cemetery part and then maybe answer more nuisance questions. I'm sure that's where everybody kind of is. Um, the kiosk, the burial directory up and operational. Uh, we do have the website that is in support of the kiosk going. Um, cemetery dot redoak Iowa dot com. Um, we were able, Bo was able to work closely with the depot, brings up the depot to garden all their veteran records. And so we started off with 730 records from their kiosk down there. So we've got a good start on the veteran portion of it. Our our goal is to have a dedicated webpage for each veteran. So.
Was that just World War II that you got from the depot?
Uh, it was all inclusive of what they had. To be honest, I mean, I haven't got through all of them. You know, there I know there's some more recent records down there. So.
Have you touched base with the cord monitor on that? Because they have some they have some information on that.
I will. I we haven't yet. No, I'm trying to, because we kind of had with Eric, we had a little bit of a release party at his place. And and so I've been trying to respond to the emails right now. So I haven't got.
Yeah, they might be a good source for you.
You know, appreciate it, Brad. Um, we're also going to launch into as soon as we get what I call caught up, we're going to launch into our first responder portion of that too. So our sheriffs and the fire guys that are out there. Uh, Kenny Hammond brought me the ones that are buried out there off this wall. We uh, scan those pictures. And so we're ready to do that portion too. So that's kind of where the website and kiosk are going. Um, jump into the tree work. We we did complete everything up on Senate Avenue. Um, as as planned. We did all the tree work in the parks as requested out at the airport. And we have got two of the seven old trees that were removed at the cemetery deck. So we'll continue working on that. We had some work at the inland school that frontage that faces the north of their property towards us. That's kind of on us to do. So we're going to work on that. Uh, staffing, I I have kept one seasonal person who I mean, unfortunately, we're still trimming and mowing for. So I don't know if this cold snap this week is going to take care of that or not. But so we're still, we're still trying to to go that. The lay of the land on the highway. Uh, just to address that, you know, it's not been the friend list.
It looks really good, though. You did a good job.
We're trying to get a game plan. Uh, and when those straw barriers, the erosion barriers are removed, we'll be able to accomplish a little more, a little more safely. Um, it's just a different critter out there right now, to be honest. So I'll figure it out. But we're going to have to, I'm just going to have to go out and try some things, to be honest. So I I know it's it's not looking exactly how where I want it, but it's a work in progress for it. Um, Jason has been moved from season to full time. Uh, with your approval, he will be half nuisance responsibilities and half with me at the cemetery. So and we will work together on the nuisance side of things. Uh, downtown planners and Mr. Bills asked me about it actually outside. Um, still performing everything downtown. We'll see what the weather does as far as when that ends. Um, we we did get all the shrubs and everything trimmed down there. Uh, up at the cemetery, we did spray. Um, I appreciate City Hall helping us with notifications, getting the word out for walkers and pet owners. Um, that was a big thing. The the Historical Commission, we've been working with them on signage for WW Merit grade marker, and that's up at the cemetery. And we're also working on improving the base for Darwin's headstone, which was, as I said, the USS Maine like the cornerstone at the post office. Uh, Park Department Assist, I think we substantially have completed everything that was on their list. And we're still working the drainage project at College Park. We've seen that big area. So we'll continue to work through that project as we see again the lay of the land there. So we'll stay going on that. Now into the nuisance side. Um, right now, we still have five properties that are in some stage of city ownership. I think those are about to go away if what we talked about was close. So we've got them all up to date. Uh, just number wise, we have since the middle of July served 140 nuisance notices. Um, most of that, a third of that, unfortunately, we're having to do the work on. So I I I need that number to be a lot lower, to be honest. So uh, we have a lot ahead of us to get that number down.
It's more than one a day.
Yeah, absolutely. So and and I I can't tell you billing and things that way, but I I know that one to two hours per property, you know, and that's probably being generous to the amount of time it actually is on site. So um, I did kind of run through the uninhabited nearing dilapidation and and I counted 17 on the list. So unfortunately, you know, there are other properties that are going to be adding to that list as we get the inspections caught up and things like that. We we just met with some owners. You know, and some of those properties are not even counted in that. So um, I I will tell you put the back of the brain, the one to two properties a year taken down is not going to keep up with where we're at. I mean, these properties are getting out ahead of us. So.
We've been doing five a year. So.
Recently.
Yes, in the last four years.
15 years. Two, that's
Yeah.
That's why we're where we're at. So we just got to stay. And I know it's I get it, you know, but it's the properties aren't going to get any better. We just with all the rules and regulations federally, we can't sell those properties. You know, and get them rehabbed. So.
So in the last couple of years, we were able to get some funding for some of that. I hope we can continue to get some
Once a year.
Just one, one time?
Well, I mean, you can apply once a year. Last time it was in May. So.
We can apply for multiple places at once. So. Is there
Which is a new avenue, a new approach that we've we've not done until you know, Lisa pursued that angle that we could run some of those addresses, you know, as a project. So.
Is there a limit to that? How much?
I don't think there's a limit. They have a certain amount of money. So I think it depends, you know, if we're always going to apply for the high end if we have it. And then you may or may not get all of it because of other communities apply.
So we we've applied for four at a time. And then what happened this time because they didn't cover? What happened about, it was something that you discovered?
Oh, that we don't have to pay for asbestos.
Oh, yes. And so they're Yes.
And why don't we have to pay for it?
Because there is a provision in the law for asbestos abatement. But if a community takes a property for nuisance purposes and that there's only one on a block, so you're not taking a whole block. So as long as they're all a block apart and you don't do more than one on a block per year, then you're exempt from asbestos.
And us being the city, not people, but the city.
But we probably paid for abatement that we probably didn't need to in the past.
Yeah, nobody knew about it. That's what.
But from what you said, though, just now, I think if you if it's private ownership, I think you're you're you don't have to abate it anyway, do you?
No, it's cities have to. So like I did a project last city that was three houses together, and it was for the purposes of building a new library. So when it's a city project or when they're all chunked up together, then you have to abate.
But you have to you have to watch. I think the avenue where you're asking privately, you you still have where you're taking debris that is going to have expectations.
Oh, right, right, right.
Your contract.
Right.
So you still have.
You have to keep track of it. But I don't think you have to go through the assessment, then hire someone and like separately.
So but there's still a procedure.
Can't just throw it in the dumpster and be done.
No, more like in a hole in the ground. Yeah.
So on the future side of things, I'll jump into, I I mentioned the layout of 34 will be working on trying to get, you know, something going on that. Um, Lisa and I, Justin and John have tried to work on a training program plan for the new nuisance. Uh, gentlemen, I'm willing to assist in some of the training on that so that we hopefully are setting this young man up for success. Um, is the goal that the four of us have. So be working on that. Um, I I'd like to simplify some of the notice processes and and some of the things. So we're we're really looking at that on a serious side. Um, have a couple of things that we're working on with the kiosk to improve. I mentioned those. Um, going to be doing some maintenance work with the trail system. I talked with those folks on if you utilize the trail, you notice the areas of concrete you're getting fall off, ankle turners, I call them. So we're going to work on the maintenance side of getting that up to speed. So maybe we don't have so many of those areas. And then on the bottom of my report, I put any numbers here on cemetery. Questions?
I find it interesting. There's fewer burials than there are cremation services.
Obviously, no.
Is it increasing?
It's it's reached the mid last in the last number of years that we're, you know, we're we're still not like the coastal sites of our country. But, you know, we'll get there. So we have to be creative on Thank you, sir. Thank you, Brad.
Thank you.
Really appreciate everything you guys are doing out there. You're doing a great job.
Number nine, consent agenda. That includes the approval of the minutes from the city council meeting on October 6th, 2025. Liquor license for Red Oak Lodge number 1304 Benevolent and Protective Order of Elks. This is their annual. Also Lucky Wife Wine Slushy five day permit. And then October 20th, 2025, claims.
I'll motion to approve.
Bradley.
I'll second.
Lester. Any discussion? Roll call. Brightoff.
Yes.
Lester.
Yes.
Debrin.
Yes.
Bradley.
Yes.
Bills.
Yes.
Number 10 is to open a public hearing on the sale of land. This is the city will discuss the possibility of selling the following parcel to the Iowa DOT for $0. A parcel of land located in the alley in block 56 in the city of Red Oak, Montgomery County, Iowa, as shown on acquisition plot plat exhibit A attached heretofore and by reference made a part hereof. Said parcel is more particularly described as following. Beginning at the southwest corner of Lot 6 in block 56 in the city of Red Oak, Iowa, thence S 88 degrees, 57 feet, 38 inches east, 45 feet along the south line of said Lot 6. Thence south, 1 degree, 10 foot 14 inches wide. No, 14 inches and then 16 inches wide west, a west, west 16 feet. There we go. To the northeast corner of Lot 7 of said block 56. Thence north 88 degrees, 57 feet, 38 inches west 45 degrees or 45 feet, I'm sorry. Along the north line of said Lot 7, the northwest corner of said Lot 7. Thence north 1 degree, 10 foot, 14 inches east, 16 feet to the point of beginning. Said parcel contains about 720 square feet. Sixteen feet to the point of beginning. Said parcel contains about seven hundred and twenty square feet. So I. Open this public hearing at five fifty-four. Did we get any comments? None said I would close the public hearing at five fifty-four PM. Number eleven, closed the public hearing. Number twelve, resolution twenty twenty-five dash one forty-one. This is the sale of the city land to the Iowa DOT for zero dollars. I am not going to repeat that whole thing again, but. We take a motion. Okay, Bradoff?
Second.
Lester, is there any discussion? Okay, roll call. He break?
Yes.
Bradley?
Yes.
Bill?
Yes.
Bradoff?
Yes.
Lester?
Yes.
Number thirteen is resolution twenty twenty-five dash one thirty-seven. This is the approval of the animal control and welfare ad hoc committee members. And we received eight. Eight individuals, seven applications, one is a couple, and all of their letters were in the packet. I think we got some really good candidates for this. Trying to get to them here. So. There we go. So we have Colleen Ross. Her along with Joe and Marla Worthington. I know for a fact we're volunteers out at the animal shelter. Also, we have Dixie Strange, who was an owner, part owner of the animal rescue. We have, I'm not sure how he pronounces his name, but Rome Azuna, who is Jill Azuna's husband, Rome. Um, he was a former nuisance wildlife control operator for Red Oak in the southwest Iowa. Previously licensed by the Iowa D N R. He's a former president of Austin, Texas. I can't say that word. Herpetological society and former member of the Nebraska Herp- Herpetological Society. A forty year tenure. Over thirty years of experience in the proper and safe handling techniques of exotic and native wildlife and domestic animals. He has extensive and vast network of contacts, including multiple private and public zoo owners and researchers. Have authorized multiple scientific papers and introduced multiple new species to science. And to the trade, previous kennel owner for over eleven years. And I know. Uh, they have a number of animals, Bengal cats. Um, and also a yard of, of exotic birds, I believe, in the back. Um, we also had Tracy Boswell, who is from Emerson, Iowa, which is in Mills County. So we can discuss that further. And she just very much cares about this and wants to discuss this topic. Kylie Mainz, Kylie is. I, I actually know her fairly well. She is employed as a zookeeper at the Omaha Henry Dorley Zoo and the aquarium. She's getting her master's degree at the University of Nebraska at Lincoln. I actually wrote a letter of reference for her for that. And she very much cares about animals. And this is an opportunity for her to apply all of her knowledge. Um, for us here in Red Oak. She is from Red Oak. She provided her resume. Which is extensive. Then we had Marla and Joe Worthington, and then Ashley York, who works at. Uh, Oak Valley Animal Clinic. I would say Ashley. Colleen, Joe, Marla, I'd pretty much say all of them. Uh, expressed a desire to really dig into this topic. Everything from the ordinances to looking at potential practices as well as shelter potentials. So. I guess. Having received seven applications with eight people, one being a married couple. My recommendation would be for consideration to appoint all. With the Worthingtons having, if they vote at all, like having one voice. With this said, since the size of the committee was set to seven, I guess that's my question to you. Is if there's eight people. The other thought is Tracy Boswell being out of the county. I wanted to throw that out at you, whether you thought that was a good idea or not. It is an ad hoc committee. It is not an ordinance. Committee at this time. So it does not have to stay within the county is my understanding, speaking.
I have to say, I think this is a good slate of applications.
It is.
Surprise.
Yes.
I knew of a couple that were going to, um, apply, but I think we have a good, uh, mix.
Okay. I think, you know, we've also have a, a good mix. We've got two gentlemen, the rest females. So we've got some gender on there.
I think we should limit it to seven.
I did too.
Okay. That's what we discussed. So.
So you think it should be the city of Red Oak?
So I know I, I can't, I can't really get on board with, you know, two people having one, one voice either that.
And my only suggestion is maybe you pick one of them and not both.
Or, or do both.
Do the other and do that.
If you're gonna limit it, I wouldn't let them both and set somebody else as a no.
But now run that by me again?
If you're gonna limit it and you're gonna cut people, I wouldn't think that you keep, keep people from the same household and cut someone else from the committee.
Yeah, I mean, that's.
Whether you pick which one or you say you two can pick.
Yeah.
We'll leave it up to you, which one of you is more interested in the council supportive or whichever.
That would be my first, my first thought is to not have a hole in it. I mean, they're both really good. Don't get me wrong, but.
Yeah.
And are we counting, uh, any elected official as one of these seven?
I would like to be involved, obviously, but.
That's my point though is. She's seven.
Seven or she eight.
So do you need six? Do you need to have the list down to six? Which you would get down to six if you eliminated the Mills County resident and you told the couple. So then the mayor could be seven. And I know the mayor would like to see this done by the end of the year. My personal opinion is. I feel like the next council, like, you know, there's at least some of you that are still gonna be here. And so hopefully. Whether they get done by the end of the year or not, but. I'd rather see them do it well and take time to do it than rush it just because this group is done.
Next mayor may not be interested in serving on the committee either. So.
But you could also put it as an elected official, although.
Yeah.
Sorry, slash elected official.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm not saying it has to be. I'm just saying like if, if the mayor, if this isn't done by the end of December and the council. At the time is good with Sean continuing on. Obviously, that's good continuity and we can decide if. Who's ever here at the time of January, if there's gonna be another elected official.
Okay. My hope was to get the ordinances, recommendations for the ordinances done.
I mean, cause now you're into November, basically. I don't know that it's feasible, but I could be wrong.
You'd wanna remain on, I know, headed up to that. Is that correct?
Long as I live here, I would be interested, but that's hearsay. I think we should say an elected official, whether it's me or whomever, but. I guess I hadn't thought about that. Being an official member of the committee as opposed to just being present. I guess.
So we agree, is everyone consensus, not the person that's out of the county?
Yeah.
Yes.
I would, I would have, um, mo- um. Motion to approve the seven candidates. That live within the city of Red Oak. With the exception of choosing only one from the two in the household.
Okay.
Are you letting them pick?
And letting them decide which one wants to be on the committee.
Does that include the mayor?
Pardon me?
The mayor would be the seventh. Cause that would get, we have eight, right?
We have eight.
So having one off the couple makes it seven.
Okay.
The non, the middle tiny person.
With the addition of the mayor as the seventh committee member. So second.
Did you make that motion?
I made that motion.
I'll second it.
Okay, do we have further discussion?
I think we have to have this decision, right? As far as. Like the couple.
I'll just, the mayor can just reach out to them and say before the first meeting, and then we know who we are.
I just, I just think seven's too many.
It's a lot.
It is.
Planning and zoning is seven as a reference. You know, we have some committees that are five, some are seven.
The only thing with that. I think it's good because you have several different, there are some several different. Areas of expertise and that's always good for.
Between the zoo and the wildlife conservation rescue.
The only other thing, Adam, is, um.
He always wanted.
They're not typically people that are, you know, serving on a committee. So I suppose there's always the possibility that. Someone can't make every meeting and then you could all of a sudden be down to three people. So hopefully if you choose the seven. Then you always have a good four or five at every meeting.
That makes sense.
And you hate to see, like, you know, usually it's like, oh, please, could you sign up for that vacancy?
Yeah.
Sort of actually have people, you know, sometimes you give people an opportunity to serve in a, you know, and these are, these are no one. None of these names are people that we have on all our other committees. So I think encouraging people to participate, it can always be the birth of, you know. The next person that's actually interested in serving in a higher capacity in city government, which is rare nowadays. So.
I have to agree with Sharon as well. I was really surprised to see we got that many responses back. Wonderful to see that much intrusion.
And Colleen is my next door neighbor. She works as a nurse at the oncology department. At the hospital and she was an avid volunteer along with Joe and Marla.
And I should tell you that when I made Colleen an appointment about. Three months ago, she told me everything that she was so interested. If we ever did something like this, she would be the first one to respond. So I'm.
I would encourage the council in the future to consider a more permanent position on this, but that's my.
But again, I think, as I've told you, if that has to be a recommendation for the group, that's the point of that. What's the future of it not to say? We know what we wanna do. Because if, if the committee has that purpose, then the committee needs to decide.
Yeah.
You know what? That's part of their discussion. That's what they come back with and that's something where the council.
Okay, so I have a first by Bradley, second by Bills to include Colleen Ross. One of the Worthingtons, depending on who they choose. I guess I would lean towards Joe for the fact that it adds gender balance a little bit. Um, Dixie Strange, Rome Azuna. Uh, Kylie Mainz, Ashley York. And then me. Okay, roll call. Bradley?
Yes.
Bills?
Yes.
Bradoff?
I'm staying. Actually, it's my employee, not that it probably matters, but.
Lester?
Yes.
He break?
Yes.
Yeah. This way we get a more. Broad. Understanding of our animal issue too, from people within the community. So. Number fourteen, resolution twenty twenty-five dash one thirty-eight. This is the approval of the Historic Preservation Commission member, Steve Adams. Who is filling the seat for Shirley, I believe. Is that right?
Steve would be good for it.
What's that?
I said Steve would be good for it, cause he's very knowledgeable about it.
Yes, very much so.
I'll move to approve Steve.
Okay.
Adams, please.
Lester?
Second.
Bradoff? Roll call. Bills?
Yes.
Bradoff?
Yes.
Lester?
Yes.
He break?
Yes.
Bradley?
Yes.
Okay, number fifteen, resolution twenty twenty-five dash one thirty-nine. Approval to hire to crush rock contract with stickler concrete.
She's really not a fun thing to spend money on.
It's not, but it's so necessary.
But if you've seen the pile down there, uh, it's ginormous. And they literally said like, there's no one that's. Even working for the city that was there when the pile started.
What happens, what happens to the aggregate once they crush it?
We keep it and we.
Down to city yard.
But it's filled with rebar and all kinds of stuff.
So you can't just put it to the crusher. You gotta bust it all out.
So there's gonna be a dirt pile, a metal pile, and, uh, you can actually crush concrete pile. So that's where the range of the price comes from. But in the spirit of trying to clean up that site, we're fencing it off. People can't just dump what they want there anymore. So let's get it, in my opinion. That's why we're recommending it, get it cleaned up. And then it'll only be our pile of concrete there, not that we're the dumping ground for whoever decides to bring things that are not. Crashable.
Needs to be done.
And the price is a range, cause you don't know exactly what it's gonna be.
So then bring a crusher to our site, do that right there and say. I'll, I'll make that motion.
And from this far, you know, our, um, fund one ten road use.
Yes.
Yes.
Bills?
Our Brian.
No, you're good.
Thank you for clarifying though with Denise. So Bills?
I'll second it.
He break? Any further discussion?
Now, here, I got a question for you. So when. We crush that, what, what if you have a person that wants some fill? Can they? Buy that from us?
Probably not. I feel like we have plenty of places to.
Okay.
We've got plenty of places. We can use it.
That'd be good road base.
Yes.
It would help even if our street department.
Project doesn't doing a need back material with it, we'll be selling.
Probably not.
Okay. And by the time we get down, be expensive too.
Yeah.
We have a lot of money in it.
Okay, roll call, Suzy. Bradoff?
Yes.
Lester?
Yes.
He break?
Yes.
Bradley?
Yes.
Bills?
Yes.
Number sixteen, resolution twenty twenty-five dash one four zero. This is the approval to install concrete pad and move recycling dumpsters to two thirteen A Street. Or in other words, out at the waste area by the city.
So this is, this is something I've been wanting to happen since we moved the dumpsters from. While we moved them from over by the fairway out to the fairgrounds and then we ended up downtown. I've been wanting them down there forever. I'm so glad this is happening. I've ran the numbers on this, uh, from what Ectronoc is, uh, proposing. Eight dollars and fifty cents a square foot for six inch concrete. That's, that's a great price. I mean. By the time they pay for the concrete and the rebar, they're already halfway into it by the time, you know, when they even start working on. So. I think it's a great deal that they're giving us on that.
So don't clip that lot.
No, I agree. I've been wanting to see this. Long overdue.
Yes, it'll, it'll make downtown look so much nicer and cleaner. Yes.
Especially just across, I mean, it was bad enough. They were there when the original firehouse was open and now we've got a new restaurant and that's your people's walkout.
Yes.
Especially, especially with, you know, like summer insects and all that.
Oh, yeah.
Stuff around there, that's like a good fit.
That's our, that's our downtown historic district. Yeah.
I got a question though.
Yep.
I like the idea. If we're already having a stickler concrete, working down there, do we ever get a bid from them to ore?
I think that everybody anticipated the price to be over double that. So.
Okay.
Now we can.
I, I was just wondering, I mean, they're already down there.
So I got a, I got a quote ten years ago for a similar slab that I was building, building here in town on. Uh, I got a quote for seven dollars a square foot and it's, you're eight fifty, ten years later. That's pretty good.
Yeah, I'm, I'm just throwing that out there. Cause if we're having worry down there, would there be a, I don't. I mean, I, I liked that guy. They do a great job. I'm just throwing that out there.
The biggest thing has been trying to get anybody here because of our city hall projects and.
And they are a little.
Know that we're begging between pavement and concrete to get people. It's just.
That's another thing I like to say, you know, Ectronoc Concrete's done a lot of great work for the city and they've actually, they've done a lot of. Uh, pro bono work for a couple of our monuments downtown and stuff. So, you know.
No, I, I'm, I would just wonder.
Okay.
You know, sometimes if you have a business already down there.
We were gonna recommend that we were gonna try to do it ourselves in-house, but at this price, it's not. We have almost twelve in the concrete and. It'll take us a lot longer.
So do I have a motion to approve?
I'll, I'll make that motion.
Lester?
I'll second.
Bradley? Now, any further discussion? All right, roll call. Buster?
Yes.
He break?
Yes.
Bradley?
Yes.
Bills?
Yes.
Bradoff?
Yes.
Number seventeen, and this plays right in with this, is the discussion on the city owned parking lot. At the northeast corner of Fourth Street in Washington, which is that lot with the recycling right now. And if we're moving those out. Uh, Derek O'Neil is interested in purchasing a, a part of that parking lot to put covered rages. Units for the residential's downtown. My personal opinion is we should. Plan in the next year or two to pave, repave that whole parking lot. Cause it's terrible. It's terrible.
If we use that parking lot a lot for just events downtown, it looks awful. I agree. It could really be a nice space.
It could, but if we have a developer that wants to build some stuff on there, I think we should hold off on. Repaving that until we find out what, what he's interested in doing.
See, I would like to see the plan. I'm not in favor of. I don't know.
I'm totally in favor of that, cause all those downtown apartments, it'd be nice to have a place to park and store your stuff. Yeah.
Grow. You know, we have two public parking places down there and we're gonna need those too. So I'm just saying. I think we should think about it and see what the plan is from Derek.
Is this.
Yeah, I don't think he wants the whole. I don't think he wants.
It's our very last page.
The last page there.
There'd still be a lot of parking there.
I mean, I do agree it needs to be, you know, taken care of. I can't remember what was there. There used to be a couple of buildings there.
Dennis Larson is on them.
The McAlpin building, wasn't it that burnt there?
I don't know what it was, but it was.
It was an apartment building.
That's what I was remembering.
And it burned down.
We're wanting to get to attract residents that want to live in our upper stories and then higher end upper stories. I feel like we have to have.
Oh, I, I think that's absolutely.
Where, where do these garages, where do they, which building do they belong to?
It would be Derek uh just making them himself and then it would be available to whoever wants to rent them.
Yeah, I mean, it could be anybody.
Here's the thing, I mean, you have uh. Those, those apartments that are above, is it the dance studio?
No, there's no apartments.
No, the one that over from it, the Browns. Those, all those people park right there.
Yep.
So yes.
So I mean, I, so now they have to, they have to now, that's built. And they're not a part of that parking garage. Now they gotta walk all the way around. Or they have to park on the street somewhere. You're taking away their parking. That's where they park.
They can't park right behind it like twenty feet away.
I don't, I mean, are we gonna let them?
Yeah, it's still gonna be the rest. It's gonna be owned by the city. He's not taking the whole parking.
That makes paving the rest of it.
And Mark Jackson own those other apartments and there's like four or five up there and they don't have parking.
But again, it's partly what makes it unattractive.
Right.
Like, do you wanna not, like, people don't like. So if you're committed to housing and you want it to be attractive, I think, and I discussed with him, I don't want it to just look like. Like a.
Kind shit.
Kinda yucky garage. To the yucky, but I asked about something around the bottom, having like some stonework.
Sure.
That it actually looks attractive and kinda goes like he's not gonna build a. You know, structure, but that there would be something that kinda goes along with it. And like, again, think about what we're looking at right now and that.
So he's renting to only his tenants, correct?
No.
He doesn't have enough tenants for the night.
No.
Because I'm saying like those people that you're talking about, like if they wanna.
I mean, that would make more sense.
It's open to anybody that wants to rent it and then the rest of this lot would be city-owned. Um and if you look back there, like, yes, there are like maybe five or six cars. They're normally. But for them to park on the backside or to park across the street, like. I don't.
I, I just don't want it to look like a storage unit.
I specifically said I would want there to be, and, and the other thing I want to remember is this is flood pump.
Yes.
So I have been in contact with the DNR to talk about um. I haven't even gotten to Derek yet, but I. Uh I got it back today. So they probably have to add somewhere between one and a half to two feet of height, or they have to do what we did on Scott's building where the army is. That the bottom two feet has to be flood-proofed materials. So that will be a decision that has to be made.
So I would say, wouldn't we be wiser to, to fill in that lot totally even before they would take it?
Right, you can't, you can't perch that lot. You can't perch it up all two feet.
Can't.
If you're gonna drive up this high, you've been parking that.
Yeah, you're. Then you're gonna cause possible.
If somebody's gonna develop it, let them develop.
Yeah.
Stay out of the development.
I think the most likely thing is they will have to just.
Yeah, what proofing makes sense.
You don't have, he'll have power there. So you know, your electricity will have to be up above the two feet.
That's easy for a parking structure.
And if it's going to maintain it to be a parking lot, that makes much more sense.
Um that would be a good idea. I, I, I have toured um Bud and Sandy's apartment. That they have, that they are renting off Derek. It's absolutely phenomenal. It's beautiful. But again, you know. You're sitting outside all the time. They do have a little arrangement for some covered shelter, but I can't imagine. Not wanting my vehicle. That's me.
Me too.
I, I wanna cover it. So I just think it would be a good thing.
It would be, make those downtown apartments more enticing.
I agree.
Permitted in that zone. So if someone owns a private lot. They can do it as a permitted use to build these kinds of garages. It's a matter of. Do we think, you know, that we wanna add to the tax base? And have a portion of this parking lot be for that purpose and then remaining, the remaining southern part remain public park.
Yeah.
I think it's a pretty good mix, you know, it's.
And you know, the parking lot will be, will look bigger with the uh recycling bins gone. So, you know.
And you all have, you all have approval of what the plans are gonna look like.
Right, right, exactly. Anyway.
So does everybody sound favorable towards her pursuing this conversation with Derek further?
Well, it's not about a conversation with Derek. As I explained to Derek, we have to put it up for sale, just like we did all the other lot. I explained to him that um in, in my opinion, we would advertise it similarly to what we did, which is not just that our, our sale would be based on price. So even if somebody came in and said they would pay more than him, but they weren't gonna put any tax base on there, that you would still be able to choose what you believe is best from downtown and that lot. Not strictly based on price. And I explained to him, you know, we can't just negotiate with him that we would need to put an ad out. Say, so that, that would be the next step is uh pursuing, just like we're talking about getting rid of the last lots that we own. That we would say the city is uh open to the northern forty-five-ish feet.
Okay.
But I don't wanna obviously go advertise it if I don't have your blessing. So it's not really a vote or anything. It would just be. Based on our class, I'm gonna bring that forward. So remember, it'll be a public hearing. We'd set a public hearing at the next meeting and we hold a public hearing to discuss. Not selling it and then that, then the ad goes out to actually accept the bids.
Other than his like conceptual layout here, does he have like uh elevations or any kind of plans to show at this point?
I'm not even by elevation.
Like what the building will look like, front side elevation.
Oh, he wants to see like a. At least two dimensional drawing.
Yeah, that's called an elevation.
We're talking about the elevation of the lot.
No, I'm not talking about that. Rendering.
Yeah.
That too.
I'm knowing Derek, he will make it look attractive, like where it'd fit into the neighborhood.
Have to for you all to approve it.
He's, I mean, he does historic preservation. He, he will do a, he'll do a great job on something like that, so.
Assuming he gets a bond and wants to do it.
It does get resurfaced.
It's a big lot.
It is.
But it's really awful.
Junction days and homecoming creates, that lot is also filled.
So in conjunction with that, could we ask for them to engineer the rest of the parking lot? So that we might do something with that. Took a plan for budgeting purposes.
What do you mean by that? We're just paving. Okay? You're saying pave the southern part? Resurface doesn't have to be paved in particular. It could be block top.
Asphalt.
I meant asphalt. I'm just saying we don't need to engineer that.
No, just. There's cement through there and everything.
Yeah, and he, he needs to decide if he's okay with the whole footprint, yeah.
Definitely worth the conversation.
And there's a few other um. Building owners that have talked about putting garages behind their downtown buildings. So in the spirit of that, we are also going to be bringing forward, having a public hearing. On that district and changing the rear setbacks. That you could have, is it right now you have a twenty-foot rear setback? On those same buildings, like on the square. Uh you have to stay twenty feet from your rear and we're gonna be having a public hearing about making that zero. Unless the garages face the alley, if they built a garage facing the alley, they would have to stay ten feet back. But you can build your building right up to all the other sides.
With the stipulation of not for storage, correct?
Definitely.
How do you monitor that?
Yeah, I mean, if, if you're renting a garage space, why, why couldn't you use it for storage?
Exactly.
The whole point, I think what we're saying is. If you're building them for the downtown garages and then ten people come, because I can tell you when I moved here, there wasn't a single mini storage for me to build.
I understand that, you know, they're, they're supposedly rented for downtown.
Residents.
No, they're for garages.
People that live downtown, but if I don't wanna park my car in there and I wanna store some extra stuff in there, nobody can tell me I can't.
Who uh? That, that alley, just talking about that alley, who maintains the snow through there?
We do.
Cause we, we're gonna have to talk about, you know. We're gonna be problem through there. We gotta worry about setbacks and we're not pushing snow into people's garage doors.
So the doors will be on the south side?
Uh they're alley.
They're gonna be alley access?
They're alley access.
Oh, okay.
They're gonna step back. They're all gonna have a spot to park a car.
Oh, another car in there.
That doesn't make, that seems like it'd make more sense to have the access on the south side.
You said twenty-five or twenty-four foot.
Everybody's gonna face the alley. You wouldn't have a garage not facing the alley.
So you could, you could have a stall to put, put them.
If you read here, it says the garage.
Yep, then one behind it, just in case.
So the garage will be setback twenty-four feet so that someone can park a car in front of their garage.
Gotcha.
And then the garage.
Yep.
So they're not just putting, in this case, he's not putting the garage.
Plus you have to have room to turn.
Okay.
You can't just go. I mean, you have to.
What does that work though if they're parking, because I'm trying to picture this, if they're gonna park in front of their garage, are they in the alley then?
No.
Twenty-four feet.
Jenny still be right here, right behind that. So that will still give that next person still.
Okay.
Your bumper to be on the, I mean, my truck's twenty, twenty-two feet.
They'll be close.
You better be careful because the garbage trucks go through there.
And, and like, like.
I'm just saying.
I mean, I'm just saying it's all different. Like we plow alleys where uh there's dumpsters in the middle of the alley.
No, I know, but I'm just talking about when you talked about a car being that close, that car will have to be wise to know.
And here's the other question I'm thinking of. So he's gonna rent these out. How does he know? I mean. How are we gonna know that they're actually living in one of those apartments downtown that they're renting that? That could just be some. Gonna have next door.
What, what Derek has said is it is not going to be the same price as like regular mini storage, that it will be. Higher than that and that it isn't gonna be competitive to mini storages.
Okay.
And I would think that he's going to give preference to his tenants before others.
So it has to be rented to a tenant.
Let's remember, the zoning is not what you're discussing.
Yeah.
He owns a lot right next to City Hall and he can do this exact same thing right there.
Yeah.
So this, this is not about the zone. This is about, do you want it to be where we sell part of our lot to be more conducive to the square? And to allow for people on the square to do it and do we wanna take some revenue? To be able to maybe help, you know, you can pick, help pave the rest of the parking lot with some other revenue.
Yeah.
He can do this. He just doesn't have to do it on our land. That's, this is really just about, do you want it to happen on land that we would sell? Cause it's all.
I think you need to move forward, just see where we land.
Right.
Speaking of land.
Yeah, I mean, you might say like his offer is too cheap. It's not worth it. You wanna save it, you know.
Okay.
And, and you, yes, you wanna say that because it's our land, we control more of what it looks like and it, we could say, no. This doesn't seem conducive, but like I said, he can go right down at. Uh Reed and Fifth on the northeast corner.
For sale, we'll probably have more offers because I know somebody else that would probably.
Again, what do they wanna do with it? They can't just buy it.
I know.
I mean, what, you can do whatever you want. But my point is, we're gonna advertise it to say, if you're just coming in and. Somebody offers ten thousand and somebody offers fifteen, but the fifteen is just gonna let it sit there. And the ten thousand dollar person's gonna build a tax base. We will make it clear that you don't have to pick based on the price of the lot.
Okay. Because the parking reges would add value to downtown, in my opinion.
Well, they, they generate your own tax value.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And I think part of it, like, we also discussed that, like, planning and zoning that. You know, we have the vacant lot on the square, whatever you guys used to say, maybe City Hall was gonna be built there, all those kinds of things on that, right by Val's. Um and that even something like that, like what is our future goal for that? Because right now, are we letting people build? Like a new business somewhere or are we gonna encourage like use up the buildings that we have, not build them simply, you know, so. If somebody came and said, I don't know what I wanna build, but. Talking about what your goals are for the downtown and if you want people to live there, the more attractive that you make it to live there. People don't wanna just have their car out on the square. And literally not have a single place to like put your Christmas tree, whatever you have. So I think there's enough in, in the way he's designing the garages, there would be enough for a vehicle and.
A little bit of story. Yeah. Right, so it sounds like the majority are saying move forward with conversations and.
It'll be a public hearing.
Yes.
Bringing forward to set up a public hearing.
All right. Right, number eighteen reports, city administrator report.
Discussion on recovery.
Yeah, we added that, but then, oh, that was in hopes that they would get us the next list of.
Okay, I'm glad you said something. So we'll just move that to the next council agenda. My hope was to get it done before. To vote on it December twentieth, so it could be done in fiscal year twenty twenty-five, but.
Not like.
Not gonna be. All right, so city administrator report.
As I explained, uh planning and zoning. Planning and zoning meant this morning, we are talking about those downtown rear setbacks. Uh we are also talking about potentially changing the. Uh to allow for something additional, I won't talk about necessarily right now with the project, but uh the shopping mall. Is C three and that's the only property in our community that is that zone. You either have C one and C two, which is downtown or highway. Um so we're looking at possibly. Um making an adjustment to that code. So we're talking about that, that would have to go before the planning and zoning is a public hearing, then it would come before you. So we're looking at that and then the thing that we've been talking about for a while, which is the R one and R two and how we have these little lots. And we wanna be able to make those more conducive to not giving up on those internal city lots. So we've been working on that. Our proposal uh that we will again have to have a public hearing and then be bringing it forward is most likely that we're gonna. Recommend creating an R five district. And that R five would be similar, like what we're saying is those smaller internal to the city lots. So we'd be looking at Oak on the north side, all the way down to Washington on the south side. Then start at Broadway and go to Sixth Street. So think about like, kinda like. City Hall, north of City Hall to Oak and then obviously Sixth would be the eastern border. So take all of that and it would all, first we would create the R five, it would be a two-step process. You would create an R five district. And what we'd be looking at for the setbacks is that right now a side setback is eight feet. And what we did in the analysis that Derek helped us with as a member of this planning and zoning commission is kind of what's happening in those areas right now. That's the first part of the city that was built. Those are tiny little forty-five foot lots. And then when we create a zoning code today, we say we want you to be this far from the sides and this far from the front and the back and like basically you just. Bail on those lots because they can't comply with anything. And so. The proposal that we discussed today and of course again has to go before a public hearing, but. The twenty-five foot front setback would become twenty, so you would gain five feet on the front. The rear setback seems like it's pretty conducive to what everybody has now and then you could face your garages that way. There's a thirty foot setback would stay the same. Uh the street side, if you were on a street side, would be ten instead of twenty. And the regular side lots, interior side lots would become five instead of eight. Um and so we're gonna be having, that's been a discussion for about six months. So we're gonna be having a public hearing on. It would come before you as well, so it's just for information at this point in case people start asking what. Um. Other than that, continuing to work on lots of stuff in the office. I don't know that there's anything else new. You know, it's just we're busy and trying to continue to. Get better on collections, you know, if anybody has any questions, but it, it continues to be a process to.
Have we had too many applications for the position?
For the finance, not one application, so.
And.
Is the conversion complete with their new software?
Um, the bank rack is the, is the problem, because it was so far behind that we're now to march and we're about to transfer it and then
Good.
you know, start now working on Casell, cause we couldn't bring the old into Casell and there's just so much stuff that wasn't in there.
Are the employees feeling comfortable with the new software?
I think so.
Lot, lot easier?
It's getting better.
Okay. That's been a big transition.
And our nuisance officer starts next week.
A week from today.
Yeah.
So Brad kinda touched on it, but we have, um, an animal online training that he's actually can sign up for, it just so happened to be his second day. But that was an online training, and then we also, uh, found, it's a statewide code enforcement training that is in West Des Moines, and it's November sixth and seventh, so I double checked with him to make sure that he could go overnight. Uh, so he'll just leave on six, it'll be Thursday. So it's like a Thursday all day, and then he'll be back Friday afternoon, so we'll send him to that. And then as Brad said, we're between John, Justin, and Brad and myself, just trying to make sure that we all kind of tackle different areas and making sure that he's set up to succeed as best we can. Knowing it's not an easy job and, you know, kind of tough skin, but we can do our best to help make sure they know the code and something like that.
Good deal. Alright, is that it?
I know you're looking at. The finance person is, uh, we'll review resumes on November fourth.
Okay.
So if we can get it done, hopefully.
How many have you got?
Just one, so.
Just one.
And we get, did get that white dog adopted.
I never heard that it was brought back, somebody did take it, yes.
Yes. So, good, alright, uh, for me, um, vacancy on low rent board?
Somebody resigned, so I had to advertise.
Yes, so we're just advertising for that position?
I do have one application.
Okay.
But they have until next week, Thursday to apply if anybody's interested.
Okay.
And then obviously, assuming that, uh, you know, Levi just got appointed to planning and zoning, so assuming there's no mass write-in campaigns against Levi, we'll, uh, we'll also be looking for someone again on planning and zoning.
I have somebody that might be interested, because she was interested in running for, um, city council in chief, and think about early enough.
Yeah, it's a good place to start, just to get some exposure.
I think it's good that they start, um, and learn about, more about city government that are on board, so.
Yeah, well, planning and zoning is the best one to start on, I think, if you're gonna try to learn about.
So we'll wait till after the election and then we can, um, you know, if Levi, once the election's over and if Levi's appointed, you know, or wins that spot, then we can start advertising so that hopefully we just get somebody in time for January and have a smooth transition.
Okay. Um, the only thing I really have is two things, I guess, um, Cease Lock is the chair of our Historic Preservation Commission. She just gave me a brief update about their grant. She said they have completed the initial research on the historic homeowners of the houses in the survey area and the date that they were built. They're currently transferring that information to the Iowa site inventory forms that are required, and then Jennifer and Derek from his firm, uh, Ally Pointer will be mapping the locations of the houses, identifying the areas of the significance, and creating reports for the state office. So that's coming along, they are also, the Historic Preservation Commission is gonna be presenting two accolade awards for historic preservation, um, of properties this Sunday at four P M at the depot. So anyone is invited to come to that. Um, it will be good. I know who the winners are.
Well, don't say.
I won't. I do think they know. Yeah.
I did.
Okay.
I will.
Will you send that out?
Yes.
Good, alright. I can't think that I have anything else, but that's, that's it for me, so let's see. How about if we start with Sharon for city council reports?
Okay, um, well, I attended the sip and stroll business night, we had a very good turnout for that night, and, uh, so I was impressed with all the businesses downtown that, um, showed, you know, they really made it. Had a lot of people downtown, that was good for everybody.
Yeah.
I attended the D U R meeting, um, also the ribbon cutting for J. Mark and Hell, which was, yeah, it would turn out that. Uh, the Baumgart's opening, which was great, and, uh, it's really nice for Red Oak to have that here. Um, also on the way to meeting tonight, I saw and, uh, talked to the new owners of the Ruby Center thing on the corner, and they're rehabbing that place already. And his wife are working on it, I said, what is it gonna be? And he said, well, I don't know, maybe a car hangout or something, but they're gonna rehab the building, they're taking the old sheds down, so it'll look nice.
Good, do we know who bought it?
But.
Do we know who bought it? Is that gonna be released?
I can't, I didn't, I was in the car, so I didn't write his name down, so I'll find out, I'm gonna stop tomorrow.
It's a cool building.
It is, yes, you know, Gary Sweet used to be there and then.
Nine or three for that.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm not that guy, I don't remember him, I don't feel it's just some. But he's not from here, I don't think.
Mm-mm. Omaha.
Okay.
Cause he was asking about, they put up a sign that was like the old, it used to be a gas station.
Is it on Oak, is it on Oak or is it right there by Ruby Realty on Broadway?
No, 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 it's not, it's on, it's a little, little.
It's on the north side.
Oh, it's just.
Yeah.
I have always thought that would be a great coffee shop. Like a drive-through coffee thing.
I don't think it's a business, it's just a guy that's making.
It's a cute little building, right?
But it's got a model of that, the old gas station.
Yeah, it is a cute little place.
It is, it's pretty cool.
Good, how about you, Bren?
Uh, so I also did the Baumgart's, uh, uh, walkthrough, I did the J. Mark grand opening. Uh, attended the county supervisors' meetings, and, um, I also attended, uh, uh, the last park board meeting, and I don't wanna get in trouble with our city administrator, but I did wanna present something to them that I, uh, learned about when I was at, uh, the League of Cities Conference, and that was, uh, uh, the bike parks, that they have one in, uh, Mason City that was actually in our presentation. They have one in Sioux City that's very successful as well, so uh, it occurred to me that, uh, we're trying to develop the Indian Gully area, and we've got some people out there right now that would like to donate some more property to add on to that. This bike park that they just, that they presented to us in a, in the conference in Mason City draws a hundred and eighty thousand people a year, they, they quantify it, they, they keep track of it. They estimate it brings a, uh, two point five million dollars worth of revenue to their city. They have people coming all around, and Mason City's kind of out of the way. Uh, but, but you know, we, we're trying to, uh, uh, purpose Indian Gully, and it's, we already kinda have the footprint for a bike park, it's, when I say a bike park, it's where you have like obstacles and mountain bikes and BMXers, and they've got, you know, chicanes and and obstacles and things like that, but it's, it's huge, uh, around the country right now.
How's that working residentially with the noise?
It wouldn't be residential, I think.
Or like a park, it's a park.
It's, uh, it's like mountain bikes.
It's not, it's not. It's not motorcycle.
Mountain bikes.
Yeah, not motorcycle. Yeah, mountain bike.
Quiet bikes.
But once again. No more rides vehicles. Once again, a hundred and eighty thousand visitors come for that to Mason City alone.
Then we could, then we could attract a bicycle.
Well, and we're trying to purpose that area out there anyway, so, and we own it.
That's a really great idea.
And the whites are interested in adding to it, so.
The youth would think it's a great idea, they've already brought these ideas.
There's parking lots out there that we can get to re.
Oh, absolutely, and, and, and I have contact information for the people that engineered and developed the one in Mason City, and, you know, unfortunately, it's gonna take somebody to champion it, you know, that, that's, that's passionate about it.
That's where we get the youth involved in that one.
Right.
They've already.
Somebody that's bicycle enthusiast, but anyway, that's all I got.
Okay.
Thanks so much.
Okay. But you, Tim?
Um, I actually went to the first food for thought at the hospital, held Chris Hughes that did the presentation on A I.
Mm-hmm.
That was very interesting. Um, we were able to stay the entire day, but I did go to the Southwest Al rules summit in Oakland for about half a day. It's interesting. Uh, Baumgart's soft opening as well, and the Y M C board meeting, Red Oak Air partnerships, Grand Theater, and Amber Kindel.
Isn't that busy at all? Denise, how about you?
Um, M C D C meeting just recently, and, um, I also did the Baumgart, I, the young man that gave us a tour, he was, he's the assistant manager. And, you know, he looks like he's about twelve, but he's a really good guy, and, and just, he was more than happy to give us a tour, and it's, it's impressive out there without doubt. And then, um, the Red Oak Grand Theater, um, board meeting, and by the way, Wednesday night, oh yeah, our pie, so we had a movie called Piowa. And it was so much fun, because it was about, it was documentary about Iowa and how pie is good for the soul, and it's good for gatherings from church ladies to regby to whatever, and it so then my two friends and I, who go once a month traveling to find pie, we sported our pie shirts and we had pies made and we served pie for free will donation. And it was a lot of fun, we, we really had a good time.
Have a good turnout?
We, I mean, we got a lot of donations, to put it that way, it was, it was, it was average for people that came, but it was really good. So on that note, uh, the chicken and noodle fundraising supper is Wednesday night, oh, is it Wednesday? It is Wednesday night.
It is totally good.
And be aware, it is a.
Traffic jam.
It is a different route.
It will be this year.
We are not letting you go and line up on the square. Because for two hours, people can't get in or out of any kind of business there, so you will not be able to go off the square, we're gonna barricade, you can go off the square to the north, but you're not gonna be able to come to the theater, so you're coming down Fifth Street, we're gonna put you in the parking lot behind the theater. And then we will funnel you up the side of the road by the Buck Snort, and then you turn.
So what's being closed? Are you actually trying to close Kuba?
Um, no, I mean, well, we do it in front of us for a little bit per se, but Amber has talked to the police chief. I mean, I, I'm just the words right now.
So you're serving out of the back?
No, we're serving out of the front, as we always do. They will just come around, they're not gonna be able to line up on the square and come down, cause before they line up practically to the highway and, and come straight down.
So you're coming south on Fifth Street.
Where, yes, and then we're gonna go, they'll do you into that parking lot that is behind the theater. And you will come out of this, you're actually gonna come down out of Washington there, that little little area, cause it comes, and then we're gonna turn you on to whatever that is, Fourth Street.
Fourth, and then.
And then you go up to Kuba.
My suggestion, do you have a map that you're gonna?
Yes.
Yes, the map's out there.
Like I do for the garbage.
The map's out there, it's on our site, Amber's taking care of everything, we have extra help. We'll, we'll realize that things ball and told. But we, we have extra people to help with the, the parking lot area and get you in and get you out.
What time's the start?
Four thirty.
Four thirty.
So that means people will be there by four. Most likely, right?
Yeah.
Anyway, it's very good, Brenda Verber fixes it and
Nice job.
She does a nice job, and it, it's a great fundraiser for the theater, basically, we uh, we have to have two major fundraisers to pay for our insurance, because we insure one point six million dollars between the two buildings, and so our insurance is like ten thousand dollars, and without those two big fundraisers, we can't do what we do the way we do it. So it works really well, and the community is wonderful to the theater, so that's a good thing. So come if you're hungry.
Okay.
I'll be a runner, which means I'll be taking, giving you your food.
It's free will, you said.
It's free will donation, yes.
Good deal. Right, Adam?
Uh, Baumgart's opening. Uh, received numerous calls about recent comments that were made during a open, private, closed forum about mayor candidate, uh, one that's trying to be on city council. Uh, but the nice thing was somebody reached out to me for a, uh, solution to a problem that was discussed. And, uh, we need to look into that, and I think it was also sent to Mike Olson. Mr. Olson, about, we need to look into what Urban Dale's doing, that situation working, teaming up with, uh, mental health counselors. But hopefully people do the right thing and, uh, step down uh, from, uh, in a way, not wanting to be up here with comments like that, and distance themselves away from most people. That's all I gotta say, cause I received about six phone calls about that.
We've got a number of resource providers that we could partner with, it's really just finding a location to have something. And I think there are some churches or some churches that are selling that are also looking at how they could potentially help with something like that, so.
Yeah, it's good.
I think that's where the churches could really, really come together and help us with some stuff there.
So two weeks ago, the.
NAMI.
County supervisors got a presentation from NAMI, and I gave them your number and your number to contact, because I.
You got contact.
She's a good. Good, 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 cause I think, do, do we not have some opioid funds?
I don't know that we don't get them, the county does.
I thought we had some as well.
The county.
I know the county does.
County gets it, I think.
Not the city.
County gets it.
Anyway, I just thought that maybe something we could partner with the county on as well, I agree with you on that, uh, yeah.
You know, that's a topic I've been hot about for a while.
Yeah, yeah.
Um, there's solutions, we just gotta bring people together to have the conversation. Alright, do we have any other discussion for items for the upcoming agenda?
Uh, yes, I have something.
Mm-hmm.
Um, I would like to put on the agenda to purchase a computer for Cease Lock to put all of our city historical information on, because she uses her own computer and that doesn't need to be.
She not using one that we had? I thought she, I thought we were gonna give her one that we had.
She was not told no, so did she tell you that? Because I've been trying and I got her a city email and then she wasn't so keen on like, it's been a little bit of a struggle, so.
Okay.
I don't think you need to put that, I've tried to talk to her about it, but you don't need counsel.
Yeah, I just talked to her the other day, so.
Okay. So, or computer.